Okay, our 6.5 item, 9:30 a.m., presentation of Partnership Health Plan Expansion and Lake County Partnership Health Ordinance Update. This is from Health Services, and we have our partnership group here. And Dr. Duhon, do you want to come on up here? Are you coming up, Kim? All four of you, we have four chairs.
We have a lot to learn from them in our Zoom meetings.
Award-winning.
Oh, that's right.
Well, good morning. I think we should start with introductions. So yes, you do have some of the partnership crew here.
You want to pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry, I'm Lynn Skory. I'm Regional Director with Partnership Health Plan. Been with the plan many years, long background in public health, and have focused really on four of the 14 counties in partnership with, which includes Lake, Mendocino, Sonoma, and Marin Counties. So spent at least a decade working with Lake County and have lots of great relationships and am really pleased with the opportunity to meet with you all. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Duhon.
Well, I'm Dr. Duhon, your Public Health Officer.
Kim Tangerman, Deputy Director, Public Health and Vice Chair for the, current Vice Chair for the Board of Partnership Health Plan.
I'm Marshall Kubota. I'm a family physician. I'm Regional Medical Director with Partnership Health Plan, the same region that Ms. Skory described, the southwest region. Been in the area since 1979 when I trained as a family physician at the then community hospital in Sonoma County and have worked not only in Sonoma County but have worked in Lake County as well, both with Adventist and Mendocino Community Health Centers at their Lakeview Health Center for, I guess I worked for over a decade there. So thank you for having us here today.
So we would like to make this, you know, informal if possible, so want you to be sure and ask questions if, along the way, some of you are very familiar with Partnership Health Plan and some of you might not be. So, you know, don't hesitate to ask. So today, we're going to provide just a brief update on Partnership Health Plan. It's been several years, I think, since we met with the board. The pandemic seemed to have delayed just about everything. And we're also going to talk about the appointment of Dr. Duhon as one of our commissioners and review the revised county ordinance between Partnership Health Plan and Lake County to, that's being revised to accommodate the expansion of 10 additional counties. And as I said, you know, don't hesitate to ask questions along the way. You know, healthcare is complicated, complex, we know that. So just briefly, a little bit about partnership. We are currently in 14 counties, expanding to 24 as of January. And if you look at the little map there, the blue counties are currently where we're operating and the green are the expansion counties. So that will bring us to really covering the northern California and 24 counties. And we really, I guess, specialize somewhat in rural healthcare. There was a question about does managed care really fit in a rural setting? And we feel it does really well and have a lot of expertise in working with rural communities. So we're very excited about the expansion. Important to note, we are a not-for-profit public plan. And with that, we try to make sure that we have very low administrative rate, less than 5%. And that's important because that allows us to put more of the dollars to providing services and also reimbursing our healthcare providers at a rate that's significantly better than Medi-Cal. And the importance of that is really for access, local control and autonomy. We're going to talk a little bit about that. But the Board of Partnership, Board of Commissioners, is made up of representatives from all of those counties. And with the expansion, we're having to do a little revision to our representation. We'll talk more about that. And community involvement, you know, when people think of a health plan, they, I think they kind of think of Blue Cross. And we are completely different. I consider us a public health, health plan, not-for-profit, and we are really here to work directly with the communities that we serve. And I know Bruno and I have been in many meetings together and MOOC and others, and we've worked with Kim Tangerman and actually Dr. Duhon in several of her roles. So we really appreciate, and that's the most exciting part of my job, is working really with the communities. So with that, we'll just kind of keep moving on. There's a little bit about the timeline. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but started in 1988 with a single county and expanded along the way, adding counties as they became interested. And we only expand when the counties want to join partnership. And in 2013, Lake was part of our expansion. I was very active in that and, you know, I think it's been very successful. And again, our, I think, what I believe will be our final expansion in January of 2024, we'll adding those additional 10 counties. And many of those have been waiting for years to move into partnership because of some of the things that we mentioned. One last slide, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota. Our mission is to be, to help our members in the community be healthy. And we're going to talk a little bit about some of our metrics. I personally love data, so wouldn't be a presentation without a little data. And we really want to be the highest-regarded plan in California. We currently have about 680,000 members in those 14 counties, and that will grow to about 840,000. About 31% of the residents are, in those counties, are represented by Partnership Health Plan. So that one in three people that you meet are part of our health plan. In Lake County, that's about 50%, so we're really a significant part of the healthcare system. Any questions? All good? Great. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota to talk a little bit about some of our, the health plan's priorities.
Yes, so come just a little over a month from now, Partnership is going to take on the state Medi-Cal contract for an additional 10 counties. Again, we were invited in, they wanted us, actually, many of them wanted to have us back in 2014. But at that time, we didn't feel we were capable of doing so, and we did have our expansion. Subsequent to that, they've, these additional 10 counties have continued to ask, and the opportunity did come up for them to join Partnership. And we turn on the, turn the switch on and been doing much to prepare for this. That switch turns on, January 1st. Always good to have such a big change on a holiday. That's just the way the calendar, calendar works. But come January 1st, we'll be adding these 10 county, 10 counties, hundreds of health centers, hundreds of thousands of new members, hospitals, clinics, DME providers, and other healthcare providers will join the partnership family. We are adding regional offices as well. We do have our main office in Fairfield. Lynn and I are in the Santa Rosa office. We have one in Eureka. And Shasta will be adding, in Redding, we'll be adding two more regional offices to take care of this 10-county expansion. So a high priority area for us. Medi-Cal redetermination, as you know, people were added to the Medi-Cal roles throughout the pandemic years, and nobody was taken off the roles during that time because of the difficulties with the COVID pandemic. And so the roles enrollment grew throughout those years. Now, with the end of the public health emergency, Medi-Cal and the state has begun redetermination and that every, as the role of the month of the original enrollment comes up, they have to undergo redetermination now to see if they still are eligible for Medi-Cal. And that goes many different ways. Most are, but some have left the area. Many individuals lost their jobs early in the pandemic years and will put on the Medi-Cal and partnership roles during that time but have subsequently gotten their jobs back or new jobs and health insurance that way, and so are also not eligible for Medi-Cal. So individuals who moved out of the area, individuals who re-acquired their healthcare insurance, and unfortunately, some of whom, of course, have passed away, all have to be taken off our roles because we should not be responsible, the state should not be responsible for them at this point in time. However, it is also important that those individuals who, for two or three years, have not undergone the paperwork of redetermination, do so so they maintain their eligibility. We, the county health departments and their eligibility offices, Partnership and all the various clinics have been very active in getting the individuals to fill out the proper paperwork to maintain their Medi-Cal benefits. They're very easy on extending so long as we can get in contact with them and they begin the process. That we're very patient, the state is very patient in keeping people on the roles. CalAim was a large expansion of the Medi-Cal benefit that went beyond what would strictly be considered medical care. It went, began to go upstream because we know upstream care of the populace adds up to savings in the medical side. Medical side is one of the higher expenses. So the more upstream you can go to take care of the populace, the better you do in saving money downstream in the healthcare side. So that includes a couple of major areas. One is the complex care management. These are the individuals who are the most costly for healthcare and paying closer attention to them to avoid healthcare costs, hospitalizations, rehospitalizations, things along those lines. And the second are what we call the, the community supports. And these are very wide-ranging supports that are sort of non-medical in nature. They include things like rent, not rent support, but support for rental, that has its navigation, finding places, difficult, sometimes paying the initial deposits. We don't pay rent, but we will help with the initial deposits. Housing tenancy. Oftentimes, these individuals have not, have been homeless, they don't know what it means to pay rent, pay utilities, and they can lose housing very quickly if they don't understand that we help out with that type of navigation. And many other areas like this, medical foods for people with diabetes, chronic kidney disease, hypertension, and the like. And then soon, we'll be working with the justice system, and that has to do with that transition from incarceration to, back to the community and make sure that there's a continuum, that we pick up the healthcare, that individuals lose Medi-Cal when they're incarcerated, and that we have a smooth transition because that first month out of incarceration is a very tricky month and individuals oftentimes, you know, fall into ill health as a result. The juvenile justice system, individuals, children as well, and foster care and the like will all become part of this community supports. So CalAim is a very broad area of work and a major initiative for Partnership at this point in time, working with all of the counties, the nonprofits as well, within all these counties, the public health departments or the health, the health departments to utilize this benefit to its maximum capability because we know it is better for our communities. Workforce development, you know, if anything is the weak point in rural healthcare, it is workforce. All the way, the entire workforce in a community, whether it's in a hospital, a nonprofit organization, or the clinics, all the way from the front desk to their clinicians, all are very difficult in, and magnified in rural communities. We know our rural healthcare communities work tremendously hard. They work short-staffed, and that this is one of the weakest points in rural healthcare is, is access and is workforce. So we'll talk a little bit about our recruitment, recruitment that we do. Transportation is a Medi-Cal benefit, and when you have counties with a big hole in the middle, like Lake County, transportation is really important. But, you know, this includes transportation, you know, we cover up to Modoc, Siskiyou, and Del Norte Counties, all the way down to the Highway 80 border soon. And when somebody needs transportation, say from Al Torres to UC San Francisco, Partnership provides that. Partnership provides, oh, in 2020, over 800,000 trips, and that number is growing. And so it's an important linkage with our members, our patients, to acquire health, the proper healthcare. And that's not just the long journeys, this journey is within a town. It can be journeys to dentists, to substance use disorder treatment, pharmacies, as well as their hospital, well, as well as their clinics and the like. And Partnership can provide transportation for those without the means themselves. And then in the future, in 2026, is we become a Medi-Cal Medicare program as well. We don't do Medicare right now, but for those individuals who are eligible for both, Partnership will have to develop, and this is a state mandate for all organizations like ours, will have to develop a Medicare product as well for those who have Medi-Cal. As you might imagine, it's basically a new health insurance program, and so we'll be, we'll be very busy with that as well. The next slide. If we look at our provider network, let's see, next slide up, please. Thank you. There we go. So we contract with all willing and able Medi-Cal providers with the state. And so, you know, so we have a very broad network of both private and public Medi-Cal providers in any county. We really work to maintain and develop this provider network. We have local representatives for every county. Lake County has, has its own representative to help stay in contact with all our, all our contractees to provide, you know, face-to-face help. They make regular calls, and of course, we're there and here on a regular basis to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible. We have a call center, and we know how frustrating, we all know how frustrating it is to get on the phone. Partnership prides itself in that over 99% of calls to claims and billing and to a very high as well for our members with the, with the member services, that phones are answered live voice extraordinarily fast, most of the time within a minute. People are not put on hold, we know that, those are missed opportunities. And then we also provide kind of scorecards, this is from the business side, for our different networks and clinics, about how quick the turnaround, any problems with billing because we know those cycles should be as short as possible, and how important that is for their finances. Many of our smaller rural clinics are really paycheck to paycheck. Next slide. As we mentioned, workforce development is extraordinarily important to us and to, and Partnership provides a recruitment program that, that provides cash bonuses to, to clinicians who move from outside the partnership network, and we don't play musical chairs, that's of no real benefit to the area, into Partnership. That can include travel, it can include moving, and it includes actual cash, cash enhancement of whatever salaries they, they are, they are provided with the, by the health centers. And you can see that the initial pilot was 750,000, and now it's, has increased multiple times. It increased this last year to a larger bonus payments. And it includes not only coming, but includes staying as well, that those bonuses are spread out over years and they actually increase over the years, that individuals stay up to five years, and that Partnership has, has invested $9.3 million to date. And so you can see that it has provided a number of successful offers to date to attract healthcare professionals to the area. So again, high priority, we know it's one of the difficult and weak points in, in the healthcare area.
So I will present one slide. And to share with the supervisors, the many reasons that I was very motivated and excited to join you and to serve as the health officer, one of them was to, to be able to work with Partnership Health Plan. The health plans across California make a huge difference in public health, and Partnership Health Plan, in my opinion, is an outstanding health plan. So I'm really, we're very, very fortunate to have Partnership Health Plan in our county. So about the demographics, we have about 35,000 members in Partnership Health Plan in Lake County, so these would be people with Medi-Cal coverage. And approximately 50% of the county population are covered by Partnership Health Plan. And it's, Partnership Health Plan is responsible for providing most medical services to these members with a few exceptions for dental, specialty mental health, and substance use disorder services. So those are carved out. But most other medical services are provided by Partnership Health Plan through the funding. And Adventist Health is the largest provider in Lake County and followed by Lake County Tribal Health. So as mentioned, this will be coming up later, but the prior Health Services Director, Jonathan Portne, was one of the commissioners, and today will be brought forward to have me fill that role.
Thank you. So any questions? Supervisor Spatia?
Thank you for the presentation and good to see you all again. The, actually, since you're going on the slides, if you can go back to the workforce development, I think you said 9.3 million invested to date. I'm just wondering what the flexibility of that is. For example, I've been working with our fire districts and our hospitals, and hopefully, starting in January, I think it's still planned for that, we're going to start EMT course with the high schoolers so that by the time they graduate, most of them will be 18, or you can take the test when you're 17 and get certified at the age of 18. Love to see more of those types of programs to grow our own rather than to continuously bring in from the outside. Is there a way of investing those dollars locally for educational programs to bring in? Like, for example, we don't have a nursing program here in Lake County. Difficult to get there, it's a lottery system, it's already difficult when you have access to one, let alone when you don't have access to one. Is there those types of possibilities and those dollars that are available for you for investment?
Well, the program is fairly, well, it's fairly straightforward right now, and it covers physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and behavioral health providers. We have, on occasion, done special programs for training of community health workers and others. So, you know, we've expanded the program significantly this year to address the needs. So right now, that's not a focus, but we are very interested in supporting Grow Your Own and looking at ways that we can, you know, obviously, work further upstream as encouraging students to go into those programs. So, for example, for a physician, we just recently added OBs as a part of qualifying for this. It's 100,000 signing bonus paid over five years, and that's where the retention piece comes into it, is sometimes you can, you can, you can recruit a physician, but they won't stay, or a provider won't stay. And we're really trying, as a collective community, to try and help them develop roots in their, the community and stay. So I think those are really good ideas. We talk a lot about how we can support those areas, so happy to discuss further. I think your EMT program is great. We want youth to be, you know, really focused and taking advantage of some of the amazing careers there are in healthcare.
It's definitely an open door for other avenues.
There's two additional provider types, really were part of the presentation, but community health workers that you might have heard about are now a provider that can be, their services can be billed to Partnership and reimbursed. This is huge. And another really important provider is doulas that can support women prior to birth and after birth for 12 months. So amazing benefits. We're just starting to get those folks kind of trained and figuring out how to bill because, you know, Medi-Cal billing is, well, health billing is not simple. But anyway, so lots of exciting things happening as we really look at broadening the way we provide health services, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Green, did you have a question?
Yes, there's some more slides, right? So I just want to make sure. Okay. So just to share, thank you, Partnership. Was a happy customer during my times when I was not gainfully employed as much as I am today. I was happily double insured for the first time in my life because the state did keep people enrolled, and now I am thankfully disenrolled. But, and I've always had excellent service, no matter what. But I have struggled from time to time, and I think some people do, with just the very basic understanding and the difference between a health plan, be it Partnership or Anthem, Blue Cross, and providers, and sorting around various providers and going in and out of network and not really knowing every single time whether I'm supposed to be picking up the phone to call Partnership, whether I'm supposed to be dealing directly with a provider such as Adventist Health or Sutter Health and all this network stuff. So I don't want to, like, belabor that because it's not part of your presentation here today, but can somebody give me that 30-second elevator speech if only for the benefit of the public? I'm glad you're expanding, and it's a great big health plan, but can you distinguish between the health plan that Partnership is and the providers that operate under that health plan? 30 seconds or less?
30 seconds or less. So we are the insurance plan, and we have the, the list of benefits. We provide the benefits, some of which are required by the state, others of which we have enhanced because we see the upside of providing those particular benefits. So we don't directly provide any care. We have no care offices, but we work with the members, we work with the providers and to make that access as quick and simple as, as possible. One of the things about Partnership is that all Medi-Cal members are initially, and most all, are assigned to a health center so that they already have a clinician or health center that is interested in their care, and they should take advantage of that. They have somebody who is supposed to take, look after their healthcare. We do that assignment. You can change your assignment if you want to because you may or may not, it may not be convenient or they don't work with you as well as you would like, but you're assigned to a health center, they are paid by Partnership to take care of you. So we provide the assignment and the payment, the health centers provide the care.
And I think regarding navigation, we're all, we're health professionals, you know, this is how I spent my whole career. It's very complicated, and that's where member services can come in. And they're trained to help people answer questions and help navigate the system. Our system is fairly straightforward, but not always, but when you have multiple sources of coverage like those Medicare, Medi-Cal folks, that's really complicated. And everybody needs, I think, help navigating, or if you have commercial insurance. So yes, calling member services, asking for help, they will help navigate.
We, we provide all our materials in key languages and are available in multiple languages on request. languages on request. We have translation services that are available, live translation services are also available through partnership and made available to all of our contracted clinics as well. Live video translation and of course, that includes ASL. And we have large font, we have Braille, we have all, we try to communicate as, as well as we can with all our members.
So we have some great quality highlights that we'd like to share, of course, data. So we're going to move Matt on because we're, I know we're a little bit short on time.
Yeah. So we have a, what we call our primary, primary care quality program. It's made up of a number of measures. Many of them are straight out clinical in nature and we bonus, we pay for performance to our clinics. It was well over 24.
32.
32 million to our primary care clinics this last year alone. And it depends on how well they do in key areas, both clinically and some administrative areas as well. But we emphasize the clinical areas with a number of different measures. As you can see here, that we compare them to nationwide Medicaid benchmarks. So we're doing the apples to apples to, to an extent. And Lake County has scored very well. In fact, Lake County continues to rise in their scores. So there's a definite carrot involved in this process because it is hundreds of thousands of dollars here in Lake County for achieving certain goals. And you can see that based on national percentiles that, that, that Lake County has done well in blood pressure control, diabetes, colorectal cancer screening, treatment of asthma, and in child visits under 15 months of age. And these scores have continued to rise throughout the time that partnership, there are little variations, of course, with that and COVID certainly put a dent in some of that, but by and large, continuing to improve in their scores on a year-over-year basis. And these, the elements of these quality measures are set both by committee that has input from the clinics themselves and pass all the way up through the board of, direct Board of Commissioners. That's why these positions are important. So it's a, it's a big carrot and it works.
Okay. Now, on to the really probably least exciting part of the presentation is the ordinance. And, you know, I think we've talked about it before. It's fairly straightforward with the adding of the, well, actually, we revised the ordinance when Lake County joined with eight other, seven other counties in 2013 because our board is just getting too big. It's about 30 now and with the additional 10 counties, we'd be a 40, 45-member board, which is just really not feasible. So we are having to, the, we had a committee of the board that met, I don't know, Kim, if you were part of that, that really came up with a revised representation structure. And so some of our counties will be losing a board seat and Lake is included in that. You can see the new formula up there. We also expanded our consumer seats from two to three. So it says eventually it's a 24-member board. I apologize. It's a 38-member board. That will be when all of the, when all the terms are, are sort of worked out, we will have a 38-member board and positions are actually reduced when they, when their term is up. So no one will be asked, asked to leave until their term is up. So at a point of reappointment. The next slide just shows the allocation of board seats by, by county and by membership. So it's based on the number of members. And so our current counties will be reduced to having 24 seats. And then as we expand into the next counties, that provides an additional 14, so that's up to 38. The other big change has been that the term of appointment has been increased from two years to four years. It takes, well, Kim can tell you, it takes at least a year to really figure out how the plan works. And so by the second year, you're just hitting your stride. Most people stay on the board for many years. So the four, four-year term will be, I think, very helpful.
The appointment of Dr. Duen is important because?
Important because? We want, we really like to have a broad representation. She's taking Jonathan Portne's position. And if she is, if she's appointed before the end of the year, that will allow her to extend that, or accept that term and extend into the next year. So there'll be, while it says eventually there'll be one position for Lake County, there'll be two for the next year. And Kimberly Tangerman is our vice chair, very important position in partnership, really recognize the, her commitment to taking on that responsibility next year as chairing our board. So very proud of Tim, Kim. I worked with, we've worked together for many years when she was at Lakeview and so happy that she's with Public Health right now.
I just want to be sure that was, Kim is becoming the chair of the board.
She will, she's the vice chair now. She will become the chair next year. Yes, thank you. So that pretty much wraps up our presentation. Any questions about the ordinance or about the health plan or about our presence in Lake County? Be happy to talk about that. Supervisor Spatia?
Just two quick questions. For Kim's term, when is that over?
So I'm vice chair now. I'll become chair next year. And then there is a, a year that I'll be, as the chair moves out, they retain that position as the supporter, the kind of the historical, yeah, that's past chair. And so it'll be for sure two whole more years.
Okay. Just to find out the, the term that's left over still because at one point, we will be going down to one. And so that's why I wanted to kind of check and see when that, that would occur. And then just a quick question for partnership. Sorry, we've met so many times, but on specific topics, do you, do you guys have the ability to advocate for change at the state level or is there any prohibition since you're kind of a arm of the state in a sense that you're working to manage the Medical program?
Yes, yes, we do. We do advocate when it's appropriate.
Okay. So there, I had many issues brought to me about the payer mix and the inability to get reimbursed appropriately and making services less and less reliable because of that payer mix. So I think I'll, I'll be reaching out to see if there's something that we can work on. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Oh, yeah. So I just wanted to ask, I was looking at the makeup of the seats and whatnot. The ordinance determines basically how many board seats will be available or is, I understand also that it's the, the actual, you know, participants that are on the program that you're using as a basis to apply seats. It gives a lot of preferential treatment to the more populated counties, I feel, and that's kind of something we always deal with in rural, rural, rural county America or state of California. So I don't know if there's, you know, like, is there a reasoning for that or is there any discussion about that in your boards or anything like that, board meetings?
Well, you know, this is the Senate versus the House, right? Kind of a question. So yes, the, it is based upon a membership. That certainly seems to be a somewhat equitable way of looking at it. On the other hand, over half of our counties will be rural. So if you were to do the math, rural versus more urban counties, the total numbers on the board of rural representation versus more urban or suburban representation come out pretty even.
Thank you. I was setting a volleyball up for this slide.
Thank you.
So I'm going to open it up to the public, see if there's anyone in the Zoom room or in chambers who like to give public input. I'm not seeing any. So thank you so much for the presentation today.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you all for working so closely with us. It really has been a lot of, a lot of, very rewarding to, to work with all the, with the board as well as the many organizations and clinics and providers within Lake County. It's really, really rewarding for us.
Thank you and thank you for joining us today.
Yep.